Welcome to the meeting of council of February the 18th, 2020. We'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
I have a motion moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, that council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of February 18th, 2020 as presented.
All in favor? Approved? Any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Petitions and delegations? None noted? Acceptance of the minutes and recommendations?
The motion moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, that council accepts the minutes of the following meetings: Minutes of the special meeting of council held February 12th, 2020; Minutes of the regular meeting of council held February 4th, 2020; And Minutes of the Committee of Adjustment meeting held October 22nd, 2019.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Approved? Reports of municipal officers and communications? Treasurer?
Sorry, just bear with me. Little soft spoken here, sorry. So, basically, we had our second finance committee meeting. It was held on February 12th. It wasn't that there was anything pressing that we had to bring forth to council at that particular time. It was more, we've got some key deliverables that are upcoming over the next few months. Some changes within the departments, we felt it was warranted to get together just to bring everybody up to speed as to how things are progressing. One of the key items that we did bring up was a budget, process, and timeline discussion. Keep it short in nature for you guys. But essentially, we're targeting having a 2020 draft budget up for review and finalization hopefully in April of 2020. We think internally between the senior management team, we'll have something together mid-March for first level review and second level review. The efforts that we've been working on with the budget in particular have been focused more on process and standardizing our documentation with the expectation that it'll be a tool for future budget processes. It'll help ease consolidation of the budget, analysis, presentation, and ages guys with decision-making and review process opportunities. The intent is to align it with periodic reporting that we'll be doing on a routine basis to council going forward. Outside of the budget process, we did also speak about the 2019 fiscal year end. The team is diligently working towards closing off 2019. And we're basically at the stage where we're doing final accruals. And the efforts are now going to shift towards finalizing capital spend from 2019 as well as anticipated balances on reserves and reserve funds, given because, given the implications on the 2020 budget process. So that'll be sort of the next phase that we move into with fiscal 2019. We've scheduled tentatively with Grant Thornton for the annual audit. They'll be attending April for about two weeks. We revisited a couple of things that were previously brought to council and motioned on, which included the investigation of pre-authorized payments as well as moving forward on consulting the general public in regards to vacancy rebate and reduction programs. So we did seek a little bit more direction on that. And we will start to move forward to bring something back to you guys on that particular piece. Outside of that, we touched on different things within the department. We discussed opportunities around the tax sale process, some of the challenges and ideas that we might have moving forward. And we intend to bring those back to the finance committee prior to bringing them back to you guys here at council. So that's the Coles Notes version of our two hours we spent together. But are there any questions or anything you'd like to ask?
Any questions or comments? So the public consultation then, tentatively, is April?
I've earmarked basically a week that we could basically look towards public consultation.
That'll be held here in council chambers?
I would assume so, yes.
Those attending the finance meeting were Counselor Ivanoff and myself. We'll certainly keep the rest of council up to date along the way. And if you have any additional input along the way, please bring it forward to us. Thank you. Manager of Land Development and Planning? Ashley?
Okay, so my first report has to do with the awarding of the RFP for the zoning bylaw update. This one here, this is something that was part of our 2019 budget. And unfortunately, we didn't get the, we got the RFP out in 2019, but we weren't able to award in 2019. So we will be putting a request in the operating budget for this to be done, third party. The staff are recommending that we proceed with the lowest bidder, which was J.L. Richards, at a price point of $21,962. So we are mandated to update our zoning bylaw within two years of passing our official plan. Our official plan was done in 2015, so we are behind the eight ball on this one a little bit. There was the intent to do it internally with staff turnover and added responsibilities. We haven't been able to see that come into fruition. J.L. Richards is looking at about a six-month turnaround to get this done and over with. So, just so you know, that's where we sit with that. And I'm more than happy to take questions if there are any.
Counselor Owen?
So Ashley, you said this was in the 2019 budget? So that money is still there, right?
No, from an operating standpoint, nothing was carried over. So it's an additional ask for 2019.
Well, how were we going to do it in 2019 if we didn't have any money for it?
There was $40,000 that was assigned to 2019, but it wasn't a capital project, so it didn't get carried over into 2020.
Well, I'm confused. We didn't do the project, we had money sitting there for it to be done, and then you're going to come back and ask us for another $21,000? I'm just confused. If you could, please?
Yeah, so the $40,000, and I'm going to get maybe Sheri or Peter, sorry, not Peter, but our new treasurer to ask, or to fill me in on this. But I'll try to answer the question. The $40,000 would have been in a general operating account, so we don't know where we sit, whether the operating is coming in with a surplus or a negative. So generally, if you look at all of the departments as a whole, at the end of the line, we don't know if we're over or under. So it doesn't matter if we had assigned $40,000 towards that project. There may have been other things that happened operating-wise that could have eaten up that $40,000.
Well, what would have happened if we had gotten to this in 2019? Would the money have been there?
It, again, would fluctuate between where we sit at the end of the line. Like, 2019's not closed off right now, so...
It's not a capital project.
Yeah, I know, but, but obviously, we knew approximately how much it was going to cost. So somewhere, we set that money aside to be used for this specific project. I don't care whether it's operational or capital. If we set that money away to do this project, then that money should be still there. That's what I'm saying. We shouldn't be coming back again in 2020 and asking for that money again because that meant we took that money and we spent it on something else that we weren't authorized to spend it on.
Maybe Keith, you want to answer this, please?
From never to twice. So basically, what Ashley is saying is, essentially, from an operating perspective, yes, funds were earmarked for this particular program. What'll end up happening is, as we close out 2019, you'll have positive variances and negative variances on the operating side of things. So in this case, this will be a favorable variance as the money was not spent. And then basically, what'll happen is if there's excess funds, like leftover, we'll roll them forward into an operating reserve for this year to stabilize things. Capital works slightly differently where we actually would be able to earmark and push those funds forward.
Well, I guess my problem is, this project was supposed to be done in 2019. We knew approximately how much money. We included it in the operating budget. We didn't do the project. So that money should still be in the operating budget. And if it isn't, I want to know where it went. Because you can't, you can't run your personal account like that. And you certainly shouldn't run the towns' accounts like that. If it was earmarked for something, like if I got money to earmark to pay my cable bill, and I use it to pay my credit card bill, the cable people aren't going to be too sympathetic, are they? So if we earmarked this for a specific project and we put it in the operating budget, and come the end of the year, it's not there, something's gone wrong. And I want to know where that money went, if it's not there.
Counselor Owen brings up a very good point. It's the difference between reserve and reserve funds. This is my own personal opinion. I don't think we should have reserves. We should have reserve funds. That money then is set aside, just like Counselor Owen said. It's there to be spent when the project, or whatever the money was targeted for. It's not to say, it may be their rec, but we don't know whether we have a deficit or a surplus. And that's the problem right now. I think that's what, basically, what you're saying.
Essentially, yes.
We may be very well to confirm that, but I don't like the process myself. Counselor White?
Okay, so to put it into a way that isn't municipal, like, like for your home, you say you have, correct me if I'm wrong, $100 to pay your bills. And your credit card comes $25 under what you expected, but your utility bills go 25 over. You said you had 100, so some went below what you expected, some went above. So the $100 is still what you paid out, but it just went to different areas. Does that make it?
No, what Stacey is saying, I think is, she would take her $25 from cable to pay her credit card if she had to.
Yeah.
Or vice versa.
No.
So in this case, so Ashley may not have spent the J.L. Richards funds. She'll be showing a favorable variance against that particular intent.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, no, I think it, you know what, it's more like planning for your vacation and not, than not going on the vacation. So you don't, so that money stays in your bank account, you have the $5,000 bucks. But your furnace could have broken down, and you spent some of that money on your furnace. So that's, and they don't know that yet because they haven't reconciled the 2019 finances. So it could be that that money is still there. It could be that the money was spent to fix your furnace. So that's more the analogy that would make sense to, if you're talking about personal finance. I mean, Keith won't know that till they actually do the final numbers for 2019. There could be a $40,000 surplus that stayed in the 2019 budget. It could have been that some of that money was spent to fix something at TPR. Could have been something that happened in the town. It could have been a truck that broke down, or that, so you can't, you can't tell you that that money's sitting there because they don't, haven't finished off the 2019 budget. I mean, you know, when you're doing your own personal finances, that's what the difference would be.
Counselor Owen?
I guess my concern is a lack of oversight then. Because if you set money specifically for one thing, and there's no checks and balances to make sure you still got that money for that thing, and you go and spend it on something else, but you don't come back to council and say, gee, we had this expense come up, so now we're not going to have the money that we needed to do this contract. It leads to, like, there's no checks and balances on where the spending is, and that's, that's a concern for me.
Yeah, but, but it is impossible to reserve everything you're going to spend in your operating budgets. I mean, that's, you know what, you can have wages, you could have benefits, you could have repairs, you can, you know, so you can't say, I'm going to reserve everything and then have nothing to fix something that breaks down because you hadn't planned on it breaking down, so.
Counselor Owen?
No, that's, that's not what I'm suggesting. But I am concerned that way, with the loose way that it's set up now, really, we're just, we're allocating money with no idea that it's going to be spent on that project. You know, like what staff does with the money doesn't seem to really matter what we pass in council. They can say this was, came up, or that came up. Like, I, I understand what you're saying. Like, things come up, I, things come up in my houses, too. I understand that. But when they do, and you know you've got money set aside for a specific project, and you're going to have to spend it on something else, then council should know. I know we don't know, but I'm, my concern is, I need to know, if we don't have that money when the books are closed, where it went.
And I think that speaks to some overall controls that need to be put into place. We do need to get to routine reporting back to council on that kind of thing. And it has been identified as something that we'd be bringing forward. The managers are preparing detailed budgets, so they'll be able to speak to significant variances on that type of thing. And it's something that we've been working with across the treasury function with Eves in particular around purchasing and procurement on the whole. We are looking towards basically establishing processes around that to ensure those significant expenditures that are outside of the scope of budget would be addressed through a formal process and brought forward. So it's sort of part of the overall plan, that it would be challenging to mark reserves for every individual budget line item. But, yeah, like in this case, this would be one, one thing that Ashley would be reporting favorably on in particular, would be her professional fees or contractor fees for this.
And I had to break you in, too, Keith?
Yeah, no, no, that's fair. It's part of the broader picture, though, and you will get some...
Okay, we do understand what you're saying, Counsel Owen. And it may well be, there may be a surplus that'll cover off that. Yeah, I know what you're saying.
If not, I'd like to know where the money went. And I don't think that's an unreasonable expectation of a counselor because we passed in good faith that that money would be spent on this project. And if it wasn't, and it's not there at the end of the year when the books are balanced, then I think the department, the treasury department, plus the department in charge of the spending of the money has an obligation to come back to council and say, we spent it on this. And, and the ratepayers have a, we have an obligation to the ratepayers to let them know where that money went if it's not there.
Point well taken. And this goes back to why we need reserves. When you have an emergency situation, you have money set aside for, for that purpose. Here, we don't know at this point. I understand. Ashley?
No, that's okay. I do believe it's our full intent to come back and present 2018 and where we sit and where the money was spent, so you'll, you'll get that soon. Are we good with the zoning? Yeah? Okay, so that's, I actually am planning on bringing a bylaw to council at the next meeting, just to let you go know, okay? So the second report that I have here for you is Bill...
Just do the motion.
Oh, sorry.
So a motion moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Casey Owens, that council proceed with awarding the contract to J.L. Richards at a total contractual price of $21,962 plus HST.
All in favor? Passed?
Right, okay, so expanding the scope of our ECOM forestry contract. This is something that was, the forestry contract was put in place in, I believe it was the fall of 2018. So I believe you were just elected. This would have happened right before, I guess, with previous council and being extended with you guys. So there was a contract established for two blocks. And I do believe I have a map attached to this report at the end that shows you where they're located. So north of, it's about, near Armor Lake, so north of Armor Lake. These were put in, contract, ECOM was the only bidder. And it was to realize about $70,000 in revenue to get the lumber out of there. So they're in there and they're actually doing the work right now. What happened just recently is our snowmobile club actually took a drive out there and realized that they're very, very, very close to being able to tie in a trail that is currently not available. A private, a private owner actually blocked the trail, so it's not being used right now. And they were looking at options on whether we could get ECOM with the equipment that they have to drive and access south on an old mining drill, like a mining drill road, to get access to the south part of the trail to connect both of them from a, from a economic development standpoint. So it does act as a shortcut. So what we did was we approached ECOM and whether or not that'd be feasible. And they did a, a run out there and looked at the two blocks that would be affected, which is the ones identified there, TKL 13 and TKL 14. So those aren't part of the existing contract, and the request is to look at adding them to in in order to assist the snowmobile club. Based on the math, we're looking at approximately another $40,000 in revenue if we were to cut it. The benefit of doing it now is that it is mature, it's ready to go. It stops us from having to do another RFP later. And chances are, if we are to do an RFP later, that is a very small area. Likely, unless there's someone in the area doing something nearby, it wouldn't be attractive in order to do by themselves. So ECOM has, is willing to go do the work. They're actually, the equipment is onsite, ready to go. They're holding it until we get a direction from council on whether or not we want to proceed. So my recommendation is that we do expand the contract with ECOM. It's obviously going to help us this year to add an extra $40,000 in revenue to the budget. It is also assisting us from an economic, economic development standpoint for getting that trail back up and running. Other than that, are there questions or concerns about this one?
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, I'm certainly all favor in this. Some of the, I would like to see with that $44,000, hopefully, is maybe take that money, put it into our community improvement plan as we'd be taking taxpayers' money out of, to fund that. And if we can take that $44,000 and put it towards there, that's money that businesses can invest in their property, increase their property assessment value, and put the money back in the community by increasing tax rates. So it's a nice full circle right there, business helping business.
Counselor White?
Yeah, it's definitely a win-win situation for both the snow drifters and the community itself. I never thought of putting the money to the community improvement plan. But if we can definitely earmark that money, that would be awesome.
I agree.
So I think she's got, we've got a bylaw coming, right, or a resolution?
I do as well, but I think it was a motion to...
Okay.
So I've got a motion moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, that council proceed with expanding the scope of work for the ECOM forestry contract to include blocks TKL 13 and 14.
All in favor?
Sorry?
Questions?
Can we add that, that, those funds will be earmarked specifically?
I think we should, or it won't happen.
Added to the end, so to include blocks TKL 13 and 14, and funds be allocated to the CIP program.
All in favor? Passed? Thank you, Counselor Adams.
So my third report is about parking and traffic bylaw and potential amendments there, too. I'm trying to stay up to speed on this one because there was quite a few that were thrown your way over the last, oh, I'd say probably a year, they keep coming up. But I did want to make sure that the ones that were outstanding were dealt with and that we can kind of circle back to some of the ones that fell off our table a little bit the last couple of months. The first one has to do with parking along the west side of Al Wendy. This was presented to council, I believe, in December. And we said we were going to circulate to neighboring business owners to see whether there's any concern. So that's the, right beside the Giant Tiger. There's typically three or four cars parked there that makes the road extremely narrow and unsafe. So we've actually circulated to all of the individual, all the business owners. Everybody seemed to be good with it. The only, the only concern was the store owner at Giant Tiger requested that it only be a winter restriction versus a full year-round restriction, which is, which is fine and acceptable to us. So that is our recommendation moving forward, that, that we do restrict parking in the winter only for parallel on the western side of Al Wendy. Is there a question, do you want me to ask, answer two questions for now, or?
Are you saying, Ashley, this wouldn't apply during winter, or will?
It will apply during winter. There'll be a winter restriction.
That's going to require additional removal of snow because right now, when you look at it, it's, we'll have to... Oh, restricted, okay.
Okay, so I'll move on to the second one, then. The second one has to do, this is an individual on Gerson who raised this concern, and it was a valid concern. Since the school bus loading zone has been moved to Gerson Avenue, they are fully within their rights. We should likely reduce the speed limit from 50 to 40 and make it a community safety zone. So we had suggested that it go right to where the school bus loading zone is at. But when we met with our planning committee, the recommendation was for it to be extended to include the hill on Gerson. So we're encouraging people to slow down before they get to the bottom of the hill. So that's, I do, do recommend that we do that. The other concern was Gerson to Burnside Drive. There was some concern about speeding along that stretch. We have forwarded it to the next police service board meeting, and I have spoken to the OBP about it. It was the first time they've heard a concern there. But they did decide to go and patrol the area a little bit and give it some attention to see if there was any concerns. Are there questions about this one?
Counselor White?
So with the comments from planning committee, where would this sign be located? Like, are you talking at the top of Gerson Hill?
Yeah.
That, or at the bottom, like on the other side? At Brown, like, community coming up?
I think there's standards on where they're supposed to be put, on how far you are from the community safety zone. I'd say we beat those. I want to make sure we're meeting those.
Perfect. And as far as this speeding, I can guarantee you that anybody speeding on that hill in the summer, once they go down to the bottom and hit that big pot hole, they'll only do it once.
There's a speed bump there?
Yeah. Yes, a massive, massive...
Sparks flying.
So you suggest we all repair that pot?
Yeah, just keep it, yeah. Any other concerns with this one?
No, I'd just like to comment, this, this issue was brought forth by a citizen, so we are listening. It was a good suggestion what they brought forward, so I thank for the community input.
Yeah, it's great. The third one is municipal parking lots. So we've been running into a little bit of challenge trying to regulate these. So recently, our bylaw enforcement officers ticketed municipal parking lots. And when they actually call and question the tickets in the parking lots, there's a little bit of a concern at my end. Turns out, our parking bylaw only has a definition for municipal parking lots, but doesn't actually say that there's enforcement within the municipal parking lots. So we are allowed to ticket based on one section of our bylaw, which is that parking's prohibited on private and public properties unless you receive permission. So that's how they have been ticketed, and that's how they have been held up. But I would like to make it a little bit stronger by putting provisions within our parking bylaw that directly relate to municipal parking lots. I don't have the terminology right now, but I was, once I got some direction from council, I figured I'd go work on that and bring it back for you to review. So no, majority of our parking lots are signed off to say no parking overnight. But overnight parking's not defined in our bylaw. We have met and discussed with our planning committee that we were pushing our timeframe within municipal parking lots from 12:00 to 2:00 a.m. in order to accommodate the bars and making sure that they can feed their constituents and then get them off of the road. So 2:00 a.m. to 7:30 a.m. was the restriction that we were enforcing. So we have been ticketing cars that are parked there before 7:30 a.m. And we ran into a couple of issues, especially with this parking lot right here on Kirkland Street. So we did discuss whether we could accommodate earlier timeframes, and unfortunately, there was not an ability to do that. But when we look at this parking lot specifically, we've been assured from our roads department that that parking lot is always done before 5:30. And there would be no issues with accommodating parking within that parking lot to 5:30. So the request to council is whether they would like to, first of all, add municipal parking lots into the, into the parking bylaw and have... add municipal parking lots into the, into the parking bylaw and have some provisions set within it. For municipal parking lots in general, we're going to have a two thirty to seven thirty AM no parking restriction. This one here specifically will be two thirty AM to five thirty AM in order to accommodate some of the people who work in this area. So are there comments or questions, or any feedback?
Counselor White?
So in the report, it states that there is a significant amount of workers in this area. Do you know how many is significant?
Not off the top of my head, but when I factored it in, I was thinking, here, the radio station, community living, you have the realtors, you have everybody like on government road who utilize that space. So I was, I was trying to think of the broader area. There's quite a few businesses that park a lot of property.
That would be required to park before, at five thirty in the morning? So my concern is that if we change the one parking lot, that means that the workers, say from the Franklin, that need to stay after the bar closes and clean up, they have nowhere to park during snow removal. They're not going to come and park their vehicles in this particular parking lot. They would be more apt to park in one of the municipal parking lots on that side. But we're not changing it for all of the municipal parking lots. We're only doing it for one. And I don't like making decisions for very small numbers of our population. I just, I just have an issue with only doing it for one municipal parking lot, not all.
And the only reason we did recommend this one was because we knew they could be out of there by four, five thirty. The rest of them, there's just no ability to accommodate it without having to change our operations.
Counselor Adams?
So like, the municipal parking lot over on Water Street, I'm thinking about what a great ticket job it would be for after a Bonds Field, when there's vehicles are parked there because people chose to drink responsibly, that could just be ticket free-for-all?
So they're only going to get ticketed if there's, sorry?
So if they leave their vehicles overnight because they chose to take a responsible way home?
Yeah.
They can be ticketed for that?
If they were, if they were doing winter maintenance activities, yes, they would be.
Only if they were doing winter maintenance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, just to answer that, Counselor Adams, it's a lot cheaper to pay a parking ticket than to face an impairing charge. But I agree with you, people shouldn't be penalized for doing the responsible thing. And the other thing, when we had that meeting, it was discussed, because I brought it up similar to what Counselor White has said, it, I'm sure to the ratepayers, it looks like we're favoring some companies over other companies. And so it was brought up that a portion of the Water Street parking lot could be cleared before five thirty in the morning. And in particular, we were talking about patrons of the Lavies Gym would have a place to park. And our roads manager was at that meeting, and he didn't seem to have a problem with it. To do the whole parking lot, no, that wouldn't work. So I think if we're going to make a commitment here to one or two cars that come in that early, we should extend the same commitment to the businesses on the other side of town. Otherwise, I can explain to the public, I know why. I know physically it's possible to do here, but that's not the perception the ratepayers are going to have. And I don't like the perception the ratepayers will have if we just go with one parking lot. I think we need to make a commitment to free up parking on the other side of town as well.
Your thoughts on that, Ashley?
I believe we were waiting on final comment, right, from Steve, on whether we were...
Yeah, Steve, uh, Steve is sure.
Going to be able to accommodate that?
Could we be able to comment, one lane of parking can be done before five thirty, or?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Could we just kind of interrupt? Other than that, it's not impossible, but it's a terrible system that's what's happening. Might need to use something else to do, but it's impossible.
Could we include that, Ashley, in this?
Yeah, if council wants to look at that, there's, I could take a look at, you know, what exactly may be impacted as well, and bring that to council for consideration.
Would council be in favor of adding that to? I would, personally. Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, I, you know what, I mean, we've often said use discretion, but I mean, it seems like discretion is, once you say that, it doesn't mean anything, because it just, they go out and they tag everybody. And, you know, and that's, and, you know, Patrick's right, they have a Bonds Field at the Curling Club and have a great event. Somebody decides not to drink and drive. Or the Franklin, who are also patrons who would use that parking lot, decide not to drink and drive, and they get a ticket for, for being there. I just, it does concern me. I just, I don't know how you can do that without, like, it baffles me how you can tag somebody, you know, because they're responsible, and we penalize them. And I know that's, if that happens, you're going to have people that will probably choose to drive their vehicles when they probably shouldn't.
And that only happens, right, Ashley, just when we do maintenance?
Just when we do maintenance.
Yeah, I know, but it could be that, it happens to be that day, that, you know what, it's today, and they have a Bonds Field, and it's snowing today, and they decide they're going to do it. Because you can't pick the day you're going to have a Bonds Field. You pick the day, and the Bonds Field happens, and you can't say, don't snow.
And the situation that Counselor Adams just mentioned is going to happen. The MNR is having a district curling Bonds Field on the twenty-seventh, I think. And we can't knock people for leaving their car there because of they've been drinking. So I think it's a very valid point. If we can do a partial clearance, that would make it fair for everybody. Counselor Adams?
Oh, yeah, I certainly see the point in here about, like, if you open it up, you can have, like, campers parked there, like, for extended times, but like, the control would be like, you'd have it for a certain amount of time. You can only park there for twenty-four hours, say, right, just as an example. What I've seen in the cities is you can mark the tire, and if that mark doesn't move, then that person, then they get a ticket, right? So you can ticket after a certain point, but certainly within that timeframe of allowable, right, then it's okay. But once you get beyond that, mark the line, see if it doesn't move. Because I've seen in the municipal lot over there, I think there's, like, still stuff buried, actually.
Yeah.
Right, so what's the rules on that?
We're working on it.
Yeah.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, there is a problem with marking the tires, though. That's been challenged in court, and it's considered vandalism. I know some communities still do it, but it's, it's...
What are you recording, please?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, mark and not license plate check, and they twenty-five, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not so complicated.
So can we amend this now, or do you want to bring it back?
So I didn't, I brought a, I think we have a resolution for council to consider, but I was going to bring these back through bylaw, and then I'll get some additional information for you at the next meeting.
So what I was going to suggest, this motion has all of the things that she brought up itself, but I can just take out the last one, and then she can bring that back separately, and then make it its own thing at a different meeting, if you'd like me to do that. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So before I get into some of the other outstanding items, I did want to mention that there is a potential funding partnership that will become available. It's called the Road Safety Community Partnership Program. And it, Tim Misspen Health Unit is the one actually reached out to me on it. They had, they were in a rush to try and get something submitted probably about a month ago. And unfortunately, I couldn't, they wanted me to give them, I guess, confirmation that we'd be willing to provide fifty percent of a cost on something, and that we didn't have enough time to bring it to council for consideration. So we weren't able to apply at the time. But they did say that it was going to be available again in April. So it's fifty percent of the costs associated with something that has to do with road safety. I have been looking to buy speed feedback signs for a while. I think that these would be very beneficial for us. What it is and what the public sees is what the speed you're driving is. But what the beauty of them is, is that data gets recorded and shipped to my computer. So when people say, oh, Gerson is, has a speeding problem, I can then put two speed back, speed feedback signs up and get the data, so then I'm bringing it to council for consideration with actual data. So each sign costs approximately thirty-five hundred dollars, so it is earmarked. I've already done the budget for bylaw enforcement. I have put that in there with associated revenues, so like, brought with it. So it'd be thirty-five hundred for both. So I feel like, just wanted to kind of bring that up as a, hey, heads up, this is, so, some of my outstanding items are now pushed back further because I want to get the speed feedback signs in order to bring you data, so we can determine how we want to proceed. But I did want to bring that up before I jumped into that next one. Are there questions on that, or, no?
Counselor Owens?
Yeah, and one of the big advantages is when we have a focused patrol by the OPP, it was brought out at the meeting, that, yeah, you look up the road and you see the OPP car sitting there. So then when we get the stats, it's not that they're inaccurate, but people see the police car sitting there, so they slow down. With these signs, it's, they're a lot less noticeable. They probably recorded your speed before you've noticed them, and then you slow down. And the other option with these signs is you don't have to display the speed neither. If you don't want, like, you can just have a red dot up there, if that's what you choose to do. But at least, I think we would get far more accurate information. And as counselors, as a counselor, I would appreciate that, because people are quick to say, oh, there's speeding on my street, or there's speeding on this street. And, you know, you'd like to believe the people, but we'd never seem to get the numbers to back it up. So I think this would be a good improvement.
I do like the fact that they're also mobile, so either you can move them to different areas. Okay, so outstanding items, things that I wanted to make sure that you guys know are not fallen off my plate. I am working on them. The four-way stop at Tweeds, Merrill Gulkin and Harding, this is one of the ones that I thought would be beneficial to have the display feedback signs to determine what the speed is in that area. Yield signs to stop signs. So my intent was to have staff review problematic areas and make recommendations, but based on my comments from my planning committee, I was, and this is something that council can direct me either way, which way they'd like to go, they were interested in seeing a plan for just the yield signs to be replaced to stop signs and be done with it. So if council is in agreement with that, we can prioritize areas to start implementing the change. I was going to go along the lines of looking at where there is visibility issues and modify accordingly, but it's up to you.
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of just going to stop signs. The health unit has spoken on that, and even the laws, I think, recommendations out there on how and when to use yield signs is very clear. So to just go to all stop signs and against facts that are available, goes against my beliefs personally. But if that's what you guys want to believe in, I'm only one person, go ahead. But the facts are out there, that yield signs are great and are to be used with limited visibility. So to change those all to stop signs has not been proven to have any benefit, but facts are available.
Counselor White?
Yeah, that was, my point was, you, we did have a traffic expert go around a few months back, and at that time, you had said that yield signs were supposed to be for intersections that had good visibility, stop signs were for low or no visibility. So I don't understand why we would just arbitrarily go and say, Kirkland Lake is now a stop at every intersection. Yield signs, I don't drive, everybody makes fun of me because of it, but there are laws that state where and how to react to a yield sign. So why are we just changing it? I don't understand.
Counselor Owens?
Sorry.
Okay, Owens.
Okay, I sit on that committee, and I'm one of the ones that believe that, that brought this up, that yield signs, and it's not just, like, across the board. There are certain areas in town where I do believe yield signs would work, like McPherson, Mcfee, that's the type of intersection where a yield sign would work. The intersections I'm more focused on are at the end of the number streets, when you get to Dunfield, yeah, Dunfield at the end, or Churchill, where you're in a school zone, and yet off Third, it's still a yield. It, those are the type of intersections where I think it's more problematic, and we have quite a bit of those within the municipality. So I'm not saying to take them all out, but I'm saying there's a few intersections where they should be kept, but a lot of them that are these, even though you do have visibility, if you're coming up Churchill and Duncan, you do have the visibility, but you're right next to a school, it makes no sense to have a yield sign there, except for when you're driving a bus in the winter. Then it makes sense, but...
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, Carter and Churchill's a real problem. Even Staff Sergeant Dugan pointed that out to us, that, that it's the angle at which the road comes in, that people just go zooming through there. And, okay, I've been told there's other alternatives than changing it to a stop sign. In any case, it's a dangerous intersection, and it's right between two schools. And whether we go with these barriers to force the cars to come in at a different angle, or whether we change it to a stop sign, I think we need to, the responsible thing is to address that situation. So, yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of changing all the yield signs to stop signs, especially since it's eight hundred dollars a sign. That doesn't sit well with me, but I think we could target some areas where we know, even though, and again, Carter and Churchill, there's good visibility, but it, it's a problem situation. So I think we could target areas that we know of, and either put in the redirecting things, I don't, you know what they're called, Ashley?
They're like concrete curbs, but they're movable.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just like, you can place them whichever way you need to.
We either do that, or, or, or change some of them to stop signs. But in, in the school zones, I think stop signs are more effective.
Counselor Adams?
So, yeah, I'm all for B, where we still go around and review these areas and make judgments based off of that. But to go to all yield signs, just like that, continue with the review is where I would stand. And based on those reviews, you would make the desired changes.
I, I do think the specific areas that Counselor Owens mentioned are, the safety issue is, is major, and that, that has to be addressed. So I, I don't think we can change everything to removing yield signs everywhere, place versa. Counselor Owens?
Quick question, when Counselor Owen brought it up, that the price, eight hundred dollars, if you're just changing a yield to a stop sign, you're not changing the post, you're not putting gold in these things, right? So it was not, it can't be eight hundred dollars just to take one sign off and put a new one on.
I used to have the, you know, it's eight hundred dollars to purchase, replace, and install the signs. So, no, it's not that much. I used to have the breakdown in my previous report, I don't have it, but yeah, it's not eight hundred. It's, it's cheaper than that.
Like a sign can be more than...
Do you know, off the top of your head?
Yeah.
Three hundred and fifty bucks.
For a stop sign?
For a stop sign. So we would, we, the way we had previously suggested it, because I was, again, before I met with the health unit, all in favor of changing stop to yield, but, or yield to stop, sorry, was to do like a capital, like a five-year plan, where we would just address it based on priorities. So we still would go look at the problematic areas, change those first, and go from there. But, and I can still kind of do that and bring the areas that are questionable to you for consideration? Is that okay?
Good.
Okay. So I'll stick with my plan. Speed limit on Government Road West at Goldthorp. Again, this would be beneficial to have the display feedback signs, so that we can properly collect information and pass a resolution for the province if it is an issue. So let's not go to the province with no data. Let's try to get data first. Second Street Churchill's, and Churchill Drive and Station Road intersections will be identified as a capital request for 2020 consideration. And then the pedestrian walkway at Canada Post, I had suggested that it be identified in the capital request for 2020 consideration. However, the planning committee felt that this was not a priority for council at this time. So if council is in agreement with the committee, I will not bring that request to council.
Counselor Adams? I am in agreement with the committee.
Okay, sounds good. This is what I need, clear direction. Thank you. New items, and there was one other one that I wanted to bring up after this, too. So one-way direction change at Laneway at Town Hall, that's this guy right here. I request came in from Co-op Taxi to reverse the direction of the one-way. Laneway at Town Hall, currently the one-way is being accessed via Kirkpatrick and exits onto Kirkland Street, and it's established to prevent, through access to Laneway. So this one here comes this way, and I believe this one comes this way, so we don't go through the hallway and cause people to just keep jumping. jumping through laneways. There's no concerns from Public Works or bylaw enforcement regarding this change, however, it is recommended that we review it by the Police Service Board prior to considering a change to the bylaw. From my understanding, the reason why they want the change is because when they are dropping people off at Community Living or here, they're pulling in here and then coming off, backing up into traffic, and Kirkland's pretty busy. So that's the reason why they had requested it. So I was planning on bringing that to the Police Service Board and get a comment from them on how they feel. Personal support workers parking on street at six AM, this was an email that came in, concern was raised specifying, specifying they have a policy that restricts them from parking in driveways. They're concerned that they're going to get ticketed because their shift starts at six, and if there's winter maintenance activities, they're not allowed to be parked on the street. We have confirmed that there's no such policy, so they are able to park in the driveway. So we, to me, it's case closed. If it comes up again, I'll let you know. The other one that I wanted to bring up, and this is something that's just been kind of chitter-tatter around the office, Swastika. Yes, we wanted to explore whether we look at, I don't know whether or not it's something that we can look at, but I wanted to judge and see whether council is favorable to it, whether you just declare the community as a community safety zone. You, you, you take the whole community and address it as a community safety zone. So the speed limit in all of SWAS goes from fifty to forty. It's just something we've been, no, 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 that one would stay your highway, but the rest of, like, all of the residential portions of Swastika drop down from fifty to forty. And I feel like that might help a little bit. You like that? Okay. How does everyone else potentially, do you want me to talk to them about it and see how people feel? Okay, sounds good. I'll, I'll hold some sort of public planning.
Counselor Owen?
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it sounds like a good idea to me, but we better talk to the residents out there first.
Yep.
Because some of them might not like it.
Yeah, I can organize that for sure.
Yep.
Is there anything I missed with parking?
Counsel Perry.
I thought you actually forgot about Swastika.
No.
It's a little community, five miles that way.
Nope. Did not.
No, I think that's a very good idea. I like it, and I don't think you'll get much bad response from any of the residents out there, because a lot more children out there than there had been in the last number of years there. And a lot of school buses even go out there. Okay, thank you very much, Ashley.
Yeah, no problem. Is there anything that I've missed that maybe came and I forgot? Or I just want to make sure we're staying on top of parking? We're good? Okay.
Okay. So I know that there was a lot of information in there, but the motion that we have taking away the last bit of the parking lot times is that council directs staff to formulate a bylaw that restricts parking winter only for a parallel parking along the western side of Alwende Drive, extends the community safety zone on Grearsin to incorporate the new bus loading area, clearly regulates parking in municipal parking lots. So those are the three items on the motion.
All in favor? Passed. Counselor Ivanoff?
Ashley, is it possible to put some signs up where you allow overnight parking in part of a municipal parking lot? I know that it's a pain in the neck for plowing, I know that it's, but I just wonder, like, at the Curling Club, if there was, I don't know, ten designated spots around the municipal parking lot at that end, where, I don't, you know, is there some way where you could accommodate the Curling Club and say, here, you know what, for winter, winter, I, I know it's going to be an issue, same as you can for the parking lot here. I know it's, that's, that's an issue. I know with CJKL, it's a, it's a concern because they start at five in the morning or whatever. I just wonder if you can put a, and you designate those actual spots where, you know, where maybe the Works Department can go back later on in the day, if they have to, to clean them up.
I think if we keep it at twenty-four hours, what I'll do is I'll, I'll take a look at it, I'll speak with Public Works and try to get some information on how it affects operations. And that way you have some information to be able to make that decision.
I know you don't want them scattered all over the lot, because that's going to be nothing but a pain in the neck.
No, no, if it's a specific area.
But if you can somehow allocate a couple of spots or a few spots where, and I'm not sure, you could probably talk to somebody at the Curling Club who says, hey, you know, here's what we have, people that would potentially leave their cars or after a Bonds Field where.
Yeah. And I, I think the twenty-four hour rule is really good. That way you know for sure it's, it's out of there after that. Let me talk to Public Works and bring back a report on that, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Where am I here? Okay, so we have, the next report has to do with winter laneway maintenance agreement, and I believe we spoke to our planning committee about this one as well. So we've ran into a few issues, not necessarily issues, but a few, sorry, I'm just trying to, this is a rate order. Couple of concerns that we've seen raised now that we have our bylaw enforcement officer that's patrolling the area and dealing with complaints. We have a certain, certain amount of laneways where people are privately maintaining them during the winter months in order to gain access to their rear of their properties. These are the ones that don't have driveways in the front. So technically speaking, when you look at the bylaw, they're not allowed to move snow, even if it's on municipal land to another area on municipal land. So laneways, when you take snow and push it, you're technically out of compliance with the bylaw. So my whole role and goal with bylaw enforcement is to find ways to legally do it, so it's black and white when we're ticketing. It makes it a lot easier for her, and it makes it a lot simpler in time. It's very time-consuming right now, but it will get easier as we go if the rules are in place. So what we suggested, and we looked at various other municipalities, and after stumbling across a few different areas throughout North America, Cochrane was actually the one where I found this, it's a laneway maintenance agreement. So it gives residents that abuts a laneway that they need access in order to get to the backyard, it gives them the ability to maintain that laneway legally, and then telling us where they're going to put snow, telling us where they're going to, whether they need insurance, if it's a private contractor, whether it's affecting any of the neighbors, have the neighbors sign off, everyone's in favor of it being maintained, and the way it's being maintained, and the placement of snow, so it's not melting in anyone's yard. It's just to try and get ahead of those complaints that come in, in the spring, when snow is melting. We also looked at whether the snow could be moved on a regular basis. So anyways, I did, I developed this laneway public property maintenance access agreement application form, and in agreements very quickly, I also came up with like general conditions on what we'd be looking for prior to approval. So things that we need to take into consideration is, you know, if there are services that run down the laneway, we may not want to see it maintained. If you drive frost into the ground, you could cause pipes to crack, cause pipes to freeze, and then cause problems later on. So we want to make sure that we're getting planning and the manager of Public Works looking at this to be sure that the areas we are allowing for plowing to occur is not going to cause problems later. Also making sure they are, there's nothing sticking out of the ground that can get hit, water turn-off valves, stuff like that, at least making everyone aware of what's there. I don't have a bylaw, I think I do have a bylaw coming to council, coming this meeting to, just to delegate the authority to the manager of Public Works to do this, so that every time somebody wants to maintain a laneway, you're not seeing it at council. We'll deal with it from a staff perspective. And then the, what we ended up talking about when we were at the, the planning committee was instead of having a user fee associated with this, this is something that's been outstanding, people have been doing it for years, whether we have a deposit process. So if you do, if you give us two hundred dollars at the beginning of the year when you apply, we'll give you back the two hundred dollars if you've done it based on how you said you were going to do it. So we keep the two hundred if you've left the snow to melt in someone else's yard. Or you don't take it away the way you said you do, you were supposed to. It's just to try and get a, a legal way of doing it. It kind of waves our liability to a sense as well, when it comes to, we're allowing them to happen, they have the liability, they're the ones maintaining it, gives us that little bit of a formal agreement. Are there thoughts or concerns?
Counselor Ivanoff?
Is, is this really a big problem in Kirkland Lake?
Yeah, there's been at least, yeah, there's been at least probably four or five complaints for laneways specifically that are coming this year. One was really bad.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, I received one of those complaints from an individual, he only has access to his property by the laneway and has to move his snow, like, use the laneway to push the snow to get access. But fortunately, it creates conflict with the neighbors that see this giant pile of snow on, in their backyard. So having this agreement, I love the deposit idea, holds accountability to try and get that money back, but you have to follow the rules. I like the hazard assessment that has to be done, hopefully that does get done. And, yeah, I, I think this is a great way to discuss liabilities and put it on to the residents. And have a good discussion with their neighbors as well as to snow removal.
Counselor White?
Just the only thing that I would ask is because it's something new, if we could have a report to council, obviously, like now it's going to be.
Next year, yeah.
Next, next year.
This wouldn't get implemented till next year.
Yeah, it would be something that would have to be specified, so we can actually evaluate the program for its effectiveness, and how much it's actually costing the, the town to actually enforce this, if there is added costs, et cetera.
Just one comment. Ashley, I, I do think this will help. Now, with neighbors phoning in, if they do call Public Works, when they identify the area, we will know that a permit has been issued. So we can issue warnings to these people as well, if they're not complying. So it, it's a bigger headache than you think, Counsel Ivanoff. We get so many complaints every year. Counselor Owens? Owen?
Yeah, I was just gonna, one of the things that hasn't been mentioned here, Eugene, is the flooding of basements. So you get somebody who's, who's plowing the laneway, and the laneway abuts another property. So they plow all the snow down to that end. By the end of the winter, you got a pile as, almost as high as this beam, and then it floods the house there. And without anything in place or any regulation or anything, there's a lot of liability involved in damages caused by flooding because of the, the removal of snow on town property. So it's actually, my understanding is the town becomes liable. The person that moved it too, I'm sure is liable too. But I think this whole exercise is an attempt in a way to alleviate that problem. Now, if, if they've got a permit, we can go in and say, that pile's too high, you've got to remove it now. And if they're doing a laneway and they don't have a permit, well, we have to find out who's doing it, which would be the hardest part. And we can tell them, you can't do that until you go to the Works Department and get, and get a permit. So I, I, I think it's a good idea. Whether it'll work or not, time will tell.
Okay.
We're good?
Okay. So I have a motion moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Casey Owens, that council agree with establishing agreements with residents and contractors to conduct winter maintenance activities in laneways where rear yard access is necessary. That council appoint administrative powers to the general manager of Public Works to execute laneway slash public property maintenance agreements.
All in favor? Passed.
Okay, my last report, Building Services. So this is, we did do an RFP to contract out Building Services, and this is not to create a full-time position by any means. The contracted Building Services is just to protect us legislatively when our existing chief building official is away. So legally, in the building code, we are responsible for being able to issue a building permit within ten days. If our building official's not there to issue a permit within ten days, technically, we're out of compliance. So this is just to protect us specifically for the month of March, because we do not have a chief building official for the month of March, that's why you're seeing it today. We went to RFP, we were unable to, no one bid in the RFP that closed on Thursday. So I reached out to RSM Building Consultants on Friday to try and get something from them. This is a consulting firm that's working with various Northern Ontario municipalities. So Timasming Shores is working with them right now, and it's again as a backup. So they're only getting charged as an, as needed basis, there's no retainer. Previously, we've never had to kind of engage in any type of consulting services. We've always had two people or two staff in the building department. Now we're down to one. There may be a need, or we are going to be looking at succession planning and potentially filling another building inspector role. At that point, you likely will never need this. But for now, I just want to make sure we're protected. So the idea is that we're only going to use it when we're required to, and we're going to do what we can to limit the use of it. So in March, while building permits are coming in, Vic has done a wonderful job, the people that have come in and said, hey, I'm thinking of building this summer, he's letting them know that in March, he's not here. And if we do have people coming in, we are going to try and say, hey, like, can it wait till we get back, so we're not incurring costs for no reason. But I did want to make sure we were protected legally and legislatively. So I think that's all I wanted to mention. It is costly if you do use it, but again, I mean legislatively, you need to have it. So, and there was no one else that, that bid. They do come highly recommended from the charters that Vic has been part of. I do want to look at shared services in the future so that we're working with other municipalities versus contracting it out. It is something I am working on, I have a file on my desk, it's been there for about a year now. Yeah, trying. But yeah, so is there questions or concerns about this one?
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, it's just the distance that they are, right? So straight off the bat, if we call them, it's fifteen hundred dollars to fly them up, house them, and do that. So there was not anybody closer than Kitchener?
No, no. So what, and they actually, what you'll end up using, if I see anything happening in March, it'll be a technical review. So we're not, they're not traveling. There's no one going to be inspecting, it'll be a, we're sending it down for three hundred dollars to be technically reviewed. We're going to try and postpone the travel to the most, best we can. And I think with communication that we've had with the ones that are planning on building and bringing plans in, we should be okay.
Any further comments, questions?
Motion moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, that council proceed with passing a bylaw to designate RSM Building Consultants as deputy chief building official for the town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Passed.
So the next couple of things are basically just motions or letters looking for support from municipalities. So the first one is in regards to Highway 11. So I sent out these reports to previously, and was asked to bring forward to.
Any questions, comments?
Okay. Oh, I forgot my mic. But so the motion itself is fairly lengthy with all of the wheroeses, but basically, we're saying it's moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, that the town of Kirkland Lake petitions the Ministry of Transportation to enhance the level of service on Highway 11 by lowering the circuit times of the snowplow and combination plow slash sander unit routes to one point six hours or Level One. So it's, it speaks to the other steps. Basically, I just have to forward this motion that we make and show our support.
All in favor? Passed.
Okay, so the next one is another one that was circulated for support from other municipalities that I was asked to bring forward. So this is in support of Bill 156 for the Security from Trespassers and Protecting Food Safety Act, and that's it.
Counselor Adams?
I asked for this one to come forward. It's from our friend, our counterpart, St. John Timasming, showing support to the provincial government in bringing this bill forward. I think what we've heard about Bill Illinois and always thanking ministers, I think it's good for us to thank our ministers for bringing this thing forward and helping our neighbors to the south, especially for food protection. I think it's just of good nature.
Okay, so again, it's a fairly lengthy motion, so I'll just read the main part of it. So moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Patrick Adams, that the town of Kirkland Lake supports the intent of Bill 156 and requests that the province of Ontario expanding Bill 156 to identify and include protections against trespass for grain farm operations.
All in favor? Passed.
So this document came my way in my email earlier in the week, and so sending, sending it out to yourselves, I was asked again to put it up on the agenda, so we can discuss if we think we could possibly be the host for the FENUM conference in 2021.
Maybe I'll start it off with comments. I've reviewed the I've reviewed the package. I'm not sure we can meet all the criteria. It's a big undertaking that I don't know whether we can staff it properly. It is certainly a nice way to showcase to your community. There's no question about that. I think there are other ways that we can look at down the road. There are some mining exposés in Timmins. There's the prospectors event in Toronto. These are some of the other things that I think we can look at. But as far as this conference, I think it's a little bit too much to chew on at this point. But that's my personal opinion, and it's open to the floor. Counselor Owens?
Yeah, just looking at the number of delegates, 250. We don't have that many motel rooms in town, I don't think. And then you've got the guests on top of that. So right off the bat, at this point in time in Kirkland Lake's history, now certain projects move forward like they're supposed to. Down the road, we should have enough motel rooms to accommodate a conference of this size. And we also have the, although expensive, Northern College can, I think, meet all the criteria in terms of the room sizes and banquet hall sizes and everything else. But at this time, I can't see how we could, especially with the number of contractors that we currently have staying in the motels. I just don't see it being feasible.
It would be quite a challenge. I'd have to agree. No, they're talking 2021, but still.
The new shaft's still going to be under construction then. And they're going to be starting a ramp as well. So we're still going to have a high number of contractors in the motel rooms.
Any other comments?
So there's no motion on that one. It was just to bring up to have a discussion together, so.
I do think it's something we can look at maybe down the road. Yeah.
Okay, so I've got a quick little report for the 2020 conferences attendees. So back in December, a motion was passed to approve a list of certain conferences that we wanted people to go to. And we now have our staff and councillors allocated to each one, so.
Any comments? I think it is important that, as a new council and new mayor, that we do attend these conferences. Chance to do a bit of networking, but at the same time, you always come home with something, some good ideas that come about from the conference. So I fully support in the manner which we propose. Counselor Owens?
Yeah. Megan, I know you've been talking to our new CAO, Rick McGee. I'm seeing his name as attending AMO and FENUM. Have you had that discussion with him? Have you told him that the council's going to be expecting that, or?
I personally haven't. Pat was coordinating with staff and councillors, so did you confirm with Rick?
I did email him, and he was in favor.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that he knew we were expecting that because it's sort of an optional thing in a way.
Okay, so I have a motion moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, that council approve the following conference attendance for 2020. AMO 2020 will be CAO Rick McGee, councillor Stacy White, and councillor Patrick Adams. FENUM 2020 will be CAO Rick McGee and Mayor Pat Kylie.
All in favor? Passed. Community safety and wellbeing plan. I'm just going to give you a bit of an update. And we might need some input from Ashley on this. This was mandated by the province probably six months ago. Hasn't, we've had one initial meeting with our tri-town partners and Kirkland Lake, Larder Lake, V-Town. What came out of that meeting was the possibility of doing a north and south plan that would at least be looked at and possibly administered by DSAB. Counselor Adams and I spoke to DSAB, and they said they would consider it. So right now, what we've been trying to do the last week or two is to get some kind of confirmation, at least of interest from the different municipalities as to who would be in favor of that. I believe there's 23 municipalities. So far, 15 have agreed. Your suggestion, Ashley, I was told this today, that we should have another meeting and possibly get that group together to get, see if we can get total buy-in. We've seen a couple of the plans. Thank you, Ashley, for doing the research on that. They're fairly, especially the one that was done in Canora's. And there's a lot of material in there and a lot of good ideas. I think it's great to put the plan together, but we need to ensure there's no use writing the plan unless we're going to be able to execute it and carry it on. So our thoughts at that meeting that we had at Heritage North a couple of months back was that DSAB could coordinate and administrate the plan and build the community the same as, using the same formula as that we do for social services. So they are waiting for a response from us as well. I believe personally, I think this is the route to go. There's quite a bit of work to do and research to meet with all the stakeholders. We don't have the staff to put together this plan, in my opinion, or it'll take away from somebody for at least six to eight months full-time. And I don't think it makes much sense to have 23 municipalities do 23 different plans. I think we can tie it all in together and all benefit from it. So what we're proposing is to advise DSAB that we are interested in proceeding in that manner. Final approval will be subject to cost, the shared cost. The way the formula works right now for social services through DSAB, I believe we're at about 27%, and Lisker, Timasming Shores is about 28. It's fairly close. So a good half of that cost is going to be eaten up between our two communities. In discussions with the mayor in Timasming Shores, we felt in order to do this plan properly and administrate it and do the follow-up work and ensure that everything is put in place so that it'll work, we're talking upwards to somewhere between $80,000 and $100,000. So that means our combined share between Timasming Shores and Kirkland Lake would be roughly $50,000, $50,000, $55,000. These are preliminary numbers. In talking with DSAB today, they would do an RFP or do it as a contract. But this has to be approved through the DSAB board beforehand. So what I'm looking for today is your concurrence that at least we are interested in going this route. And then we'll take it from there to final approval if everything meets to our satisfaction. Otherwise, we're on our own to have to do it. Any comments or thoughts? Counselor Ivanoff?
No, I agree with you. There's no reason we should be doing 23 different plans. And I think if somebody can do a good job on this, why not share the costs? Absolutely.
Any other comments?
Okay, I have a motion moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Patrick Adams, that the council for the town of Kirkland Lake requests the District of Timasming Social Services Board, DSAB, to take a lead in administering and developing a community safety and wellbeing plan for our district. That the costs associated with this plan be included in the DSAB budget with the costs prorated to the municipalities using the cost-sharing formula that is already in place.
Just one other comment before we vote. In my discussions with DSAB today, we do not want to make this a make-work project for them. What, the main thing is to get this in place and have them do the administration and the paperwork on it so it can work in a smoother fashion. Any other comments? All in favor? Passed. Introduction of reading and consideration of bylaws?
I have a motion moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, that bylaw 20-018 being a bylaw to authorize the borrowing upon amortizing debentures towards the cost of a 2019 John Deere 644K loader be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed.
I have a motion moved by Dennis Perrier, seconded by Stacy White, that bylaw 20-019 being a bylaw to delegate administrative powers to the manager of public works be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed.
Motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Dennis Perrier, that bylaw 20-020 being a bylaw to stop up, close, and declare the laneway located to the west of Lot 794 to 803 Plan M137 as surplus land be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Approved. Passed.
Motion moved by Dennis Perrier, seconded by Stacy White, that bylaw 20-021 being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund Corporation for expansion of municipal services adjacent to the industrial park be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Dennis Perrier, that bylaw 20-023 being a bylaw to appoint a deputy chief building official and property standards officer be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed. Questions from council? Counselor Adams?
Yeah, there was a question that was last week by Counselor Owens. But just to refrain from council staff relations policy 54, "Role of council and staff. Members of council should use the resources of staff and officers judicially. Reports cost taxpayer money and take staff and officers' time away from other issues or problems that may need attention." So I told you I can't discuss this, but under our procedural bylaw of new matter, it's very specific on 58, "A motion for introducing new material shall not be presented without notice unless council, without debate, dispenses with such notice by two-thirds vote of members present." So I did provide everyone a copy of the tiered response plan. And if you want to discuss this fully so that we can stop one of our staff members from continuing to investigate this, I guess we needed two-thirds vote. Is that right? That's correct. Okay. So do you guys want to talk about the document before you so we can stop staff from investigating?
Counselor Owens?
Yeah, I just want to thank Patrick for getting that document because the information that I had received apparently was not accurate. And so what I had requested for the two, for you and the mayor to ask would have made us look very silly. But I can assure you that the information I received came from a very credible source. Otherwise, I would not have brought it to the table. And I'm glad we have the document, and I don't think we need to discuss it further. I think if we can vote on two-thirds and just accept the document and put that issue to rest.
Perfect. Because as long as we just, it's, all the information's available. We do have a tiered program assignment. There's seven other municipalities. And we don't need any more reports coming from staff as we have all the information available at this time.
We're okay then? Do you want to have further discussion on this now? No? Go ahead.
I think we just need a resolution to accept the report as information requested.
So Patrick, how would you like the motion to read?
That the council accepts the materials provided by council and no more staff reports should be utilized in the investigation of the tiered response.
Okay. Moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Casey Owens, that council accepts material provided by Patrick Adams. Refire calls or EMS responses?
Tier response.
Tier response plan? And no staff report is needed to bring back to council?
All in favor? Passed. Any notice of motions? Whoops, sorry. Counselor Owens?
I have one quick question. Is there a reason that the Christmas lights on the utility poles downtown are still lit up every night? Because I think Christmas is over.
We'll check in trip. Confirmation by law?
So I have a motion moved by Dennis Perrier, seconded by Stacy White, that bylaw 20-022, that being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held February 18th, 2020, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed. Councillors' reports. Counselor Owens?
Yeah, I think the mayor was a very wise man this week by deciding to be out of town on the night that the flame on Yogi was to be lit. But I am very pleased to report that Megan and I attended, and I reported on behalf of the mayor and council. And Megan spoke on behalf of the staff and employees of the town. I want to commend the Lions Club for taking over that project. They're a small club. This is their first year, and I know it's going to continue to grow. I brought my grandson to the, well, I let my wife come too. But the important thing is I brought my grandson to the games on Saturday. He had a really enjoyable thing, and it's funny, for a three-year-old, his biggest thrill was to go and get up close to Yogi. That's the thing he enjoyed the most. And I just happened to be downtown about 2:30 when they were just finishing up cleaning. And I want to commend the Lions Club for doing an excellent job. cleaning, and I want to commend the Lions Club for doing an excellent job of cleaning up, there wasn't a paper cup, there wasn't a piece of wood, there wasn't any sawdust, there was nothing, they cleaned up after their use, just great, and again, I just want to commend the Lions Club for taking on that, that big job, because I think there's only eight or 10 of them, and Bob Bevan of the Lions Club said that they're going to make this their one big project that they're going to, they're planning on doing every year, so that was good to hear, that it will continue, and it'll continue as a family-oriented event.
I echo the same comments, Councillor Owen, they did this, the Lions Club, on very short notice, exceptional job of organizing in such a short period of time, like you said, eight or 10 members, so congratulations to them, and look forward to making it grow in future years. I attended a, as part of the Community College Committee, I attended a meeting in Timmins with the mayor from Tomaskaming Shores, and myself, and the chair of the Community Council, College Community Committee in Timmins, the purpose of that meeting was to speak with the mayor of Timmins, who is also the chair of the board for the Northern College, was to promote additional programming, and there is a change in, I forget if the position, the director, whether it's dean or whatever the title is, is retiring Fred Gibbons, and to ensure that all campuses get future consideration, there's lots of room up at the college, at one time, we had four or five hundred students, I don't think we're going to get back to that point, but certainly the enrollment has increased, the number of foreign students or international students, I should say, have come to Kirkland Lake and been a welcome addition, they bring new life to the community, all the students do, and we wanted to ensure that the, each campus is promoted more so than not just Timmins, and also to promote more Northern Ontario students to come to the college, because at one point, probably 50, 60% of those students that were here were from the Northern Ontario area, so that was the purpose of the meeting, and we were well-received by Mayor Perry in Timmins, and he agreed with our, the message we're bringing, so hopefully, this will bring us a little more concentration on the other, the other campuses, so it was a very worthwhile session with him. Any other comments? Councillor Perrier?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up a little bit on a possible committee for council, I'll present a report on this to the next council meeting, anyway, I believe the town of Kirkland Lake and its taxpayers would greatly benefit from a technical review committee, the committee would consist of a mix of experienced people from trades and constructions, the role of the committee could be as follows, review all fixed plant, mobile equipment, and major parts purchases to review for best fit, quality, availability, longevity, and price, review all capital projects over $50,000 threshold with similar criteria as above, recommend a best-fit third-party consultants, contractors, and suppliers, and aid in proper bid reviews and award recommendations for major equipment and capital projects bids, and what other possible things?
Yeah, I believe that should have been brought up under notice of motions, if you're looking to have a motion passed, but we'll take it as that then.
Okay.
Any further comments? Adjourn? Motion?
Motion moved by Stacey White, seconded by Dennis, Dennis or?
No, it's Dennis.
Seconded by Dennis Perrier, that council adjourn to an in-camera meeting pursuant to Section 239 Bracket 2 of the Municipal Acts to discuss identifiable individuals within the corporation.
All in favor? Adjourned.
Nothing, the same thing that we said, next meeting you'll bring your report to council.
Oh, this here, this one?
Yeah.
Yep. I'm okay. We'll have to drain the spuds.